Thank you. And after a meeting to honor agenda review and disposition.
I have nothing to add or take away.
Okay, great. Privilege of the floor, we have the pamphlets up there in the corner for those that would like to speak. We have one in the beginning of the meeting, one at the, towards the end of the meeting. We have some work to do in this meeting with the budget, warrant articles, et cetera. So you can certainly speak now or speak later. You know, we see the volume of the lights and the question really is going to be funding those lights and that's what we're going to talk about in our meeting. We reversed our sponsorship policy so that we hope to get some monies coming in that way in terms of offsetting that light, those light expenses. And possibly in addition to the sponsorship to donors and alumni as well. And we definitely welcome you guys spreading the word and helping us pursue what monies we will need to see that happen. Hoping not to, you know, put all of that out there for the town to pay. And then we'll talk about the budget, kind of a snapshot of where we're at. At around eighteen million with about four million in our revenues. And we have another revenue funding source that we hope to iron out as well in the near future. So with that being said, would anyone like to say anything at the first privilege of the floor? Yes. Lineup, we need you to state your name, what town you're from, and you've got a couple of minutes to share your thoughts with us.
Bonnie Sears and I'm from Plymouth and I live on twenty seventh Seal Drive. And my concern was, now, the amount for those lights, I mean, I heard, but can you confirm it's like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Worst case scenario.
Yeah, that is, hopefully that is. My concern was because of the taxes, you know. I was hoping that maybe there could be some way to get this money through fundraising or grants or whatever because the taxes, I can't believe how much they just keep going up every, every year. And there's a lot of people that are really struggling, including me, and, you know, people like me that are retired. No extra money coming in, no raises or, you know, just the social security. And that was my concern. I mean, my own opinion is I don't think the lights would make that much difference. They usually are done playing football by about now anyway. But whatever, if, you know, you really need it, I suppose, but I think it's a want, not a need. But I would like to see the money come from someplace other than from the taxpayers. I think it's just putting too much on us.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that, appreciate that. Anyone else? Yes, Chris?
My name is Chris Sanborn from Plymouth, I'm also a player at the high school. You know, we talked at two previous meetings, a committee meeting and a board meeting about the lights and the benefits of the lights. You know, I think both soccer talked about it and football, you know, more, more of a need than a want. And I just hope that here we really consider putting this on a warrant article. You know, if that can be offset by fundraising, I think that would be ideal. But I hope we put it on a warrant article and put it out to the voters and let them decide in this, in this community. It's a big community and I just hope that, you know, we consider that option and don't stop here, let it go up to a vote.
Chris, speak a little bit about how the games get cut short, just so that people that weren't at the last meetings can hear a little bit about, say, the JV or the commercial teams.
So I'll speak in terms of both football and soccer because I've seen it. But, you know, as far as football goes, as far as like varsity, you know, we're practicing for playoffs in the dark. You know, we get an hour of light trying to practice. It's not very ideal. We bring in some temporary lights, some pipe construction with those motors and try to do that, not ideal. But then at the freshman and JV level is where it's really difficult to get games. You know, I just was on the phone with the South Eastern coach tonight talking about it. You know, they canceled on us this year because they couldn't get a bus. You know, they couldn't leave till three thirty, they're not going to get here till five, we don't have lights, we can't play. If we had lights, it'd be no problem, we can play the game. And we had, we had a lot of those get canceled. We're trying to scramble and it gets tougher every year. Our last JV game for our kids got canceled the day before because the team couldn't get a bus, couldn't get here and it was going to get dark. We were lucky to fill up with another opponent that had their week and they came up and could get here early. But with the busing issue across the state, it's, it's getting tougher and tougher for teams to be able to get a team here, whether it's a JV or a freshman football team. We're in the losing games. Kids just don't want to play sports if they can't play. So that's the biggest issue. And more and more, because there's fewer teams, we're trying to do little three-way games where everybody gets a game and most go longer. And without lights, we just run into darkness every, every time. You know, not this year, but last year at JV, teams and freshmen had to go down to South Eastern, down to Amherst, an hour and thirty minutes, three times to play games because they couldn't get out in time to play up here with lights. You know, so I didn't, I mean, that was tough on the kids, three times in one year, go down there and I don't have drive. Where, you know, they would have, we would have split those. One year, next, next year would have been, you know, if you're two games one year, it's your home, then two games the next year out of those three. So that's, it puts a burden on kids. And then, you know, as far as the soccer goes, I can speak to that because I've watched it. My cousin's daughter plays and, you know, due to the shortage of officials, JV soccer has to play after varsity. So they play the varsity game and then the JV comes on. And I saw those girls, I mean, eight minutes running time and it's dark, I mean, and they were, they were playing in the dark. You know, so they're in there cutting the game short. Those, those kids that are growing up, you know, playing sport and they're coming here at those, you know, the JV and freshman level is so important to build your programs and those kids aren't getting the time on the field, you know. Are they getting better? Are they losing their interest in the sport? You know, they're doing all this practice and can't play. Same thing for me with my JV and freshman kids. I got almost eighty kids in the program, trying to get them gains. It's difficult and it's getting very difficult without the ability, without lights, with the busing issues across state. You know, we have busing issues here, but everybody's going through that. And they just, they just can't get out, they can't get out of their school sometimes till three thirty. They come here, it's just, it gets, it's dark, so.
Okay, great.
I ask, what is, when is football season over?
Well, football ended this year. We lost in the state semifinals about November fourteenth, something like that. We would have gone another week.
So if they had lights right now, they wouldn't be playing, obviously.
Well, we would have been last week, we would have been playing, so we would have been practicing. So, yeah, so it's really for practice. I mean, playoffs are Saturdays anyway, but you need for practice because, you know, we get our school, we start practice at three, four, it's getting dark. It's, it's tough to practice, you know, and you go a couple of days out of sync and then, you know, week, two weeks, three weeks. This, this year would have been four weeks in the dark. It's, it's difficult, you know, to have lights and it changes everything you do. And I just think it's a hindrance for our kids. And I know years ago we didn't have lights, but, you know, it's not nineteen eighty-four anymore either, I think is the big thing.
What do you mean?
Well, I just think, you know, back in the day, not everybody had them and now so many teams have lights.
Well, yeah, I, I know. And InterLakes is going through that now, trying to get lights. What they're doing is they are, they don't want to put it on the backs of the taxpayers. They, you know, some article in the paper about it and they are doing fundraises and giving grants.
Yeah, and I think, I think the thing is, being in this community for as long as I have, you know, I think in the, in the InterLakes district and talking to these guys, you know, there's a lot more businesses down there that give bigger sums for the whole community.
That's a terrific time, yeah.
Yeah, and I think here, and I just think, if we, you know, when someone brought up last, I think it was you, David, you know, the amount on the tax bill to fund this is, is so minute on your tax bill.
Half a million, over half a million dollars is going to be minute.
But if you spread, it's not just Plymouth, you've got to remember, this is, this is SAU forty-eight, so it's a lot of towns that are footing that bill, you know. I mean, it's just, it's so, and I just think, I looked at the, you know, cost analysis and I hope we put it out to warrant. It would be ideal if we could offset that with fundraising and stuff, I think you're right. I'd like the board change that policy. But I think, you know, it's something that we should move on and I think if you look at the overall cost, spread out over all the towns we have in the district, it's.
And Chris, just, we have three teams at, at the football field and five to six at the soccer and lacrosse field?
Yeah, so we have, well, you have a varsity and JV, boys and girls, so in the fall, four teams. And then the spring you have boys and girls lacrosse.
Todd can answer this too, as far as the needs.
I'm sorry?
It's a Todd can answer.
There's three, there's three high school football teams, but there's also Plymouth Middle School plays there and the Plymouth Huskies play there as well throughout the fall.
And the Plymouth Huskies are still, still practicing because they're going to Florida. Not that they would practice, but if we had lights, it might be an option for them to get practice under the lights. You know, the season's still going. As you can imagine with, you know, a regional team like that trying to get practice time, I hopefully throw practice in the dark.
Okay, so that's the first privilege of the floor. Anyone else that wants to add? Yes, David?
Yeah, so David James, I live right here at Plymouth, I'm the president of the Plymouth Huskies, so we're qualified to go to nationals, so we're going to nationals this weekend. So we're, my, my kids have been bounced around for the past two weeks. Over at the college and all while they're up at Linwood for the next few days to try to get some, you know, some practice time before they go to Florida. So as an example to the tax bill, I talked about it last time, but the solar array we all voted in for, that was twenty cents per thousand added to the tax bill and that was six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So just as, as an example, as, as the low that we would take on as taxpayers, it would be a little bit more with the seven fifty we're talking about, but it's right in that twenty cent. Yeah, right, it'd be spread out throughout more towns too, that's not just, that was just for Plymouth. And the other thing too, I guess I wanted to go back to sharing the handout that Todd gave us was, right now, twelve out of the sixteen schools in Division Two had lights. And so I feel like what's going on now is we're holding our student athletes back and that just doesn't feel like something Plymouth should be continuing to do. It's also Coach Sanborn says it's a safety thing, but I think we should be able to offer the best facilities, sports facilities for our students and athletes. You know, we're, we're a little bit behind when it comes to lights and the athletic fields that we have. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. I know every, again, I said before, taxes are going up, even though the rate went down, everybody's assessment went up. That's how it goes every single time. So, you know, I fully support this, just like Coach Sanborn said, let's put it to a warrant article, let's have everybody vote on it and see what happens.
Anyone else?
Ted. Ted Wyszynski, Plymouth. Clarification on the solar array that was bonded and spread over a number of years. So even though it was six hundred and something thousand, it's not paying for it. So the rate is going to be lower.
Okay, thanks Ted for that clarification. Yes, Zach?
I'll have a second clarification to that. Also, the cost of the solar array is a hundred percent offset by the revenue that we generate from the solar, so not a perfect point.
Definitely a different story.
Yeah, just, just a little bit of apple.
Just throwing out a dollar now.
Yeah, I just, at the same time, I am in support of, you know, the lights, especially on the soccer field. I, I watched my kids, you know, especially JV play shortened games. And it's a coach's perspective. That's, it's not great for developing a program, right? If your JV kids are playing partial games or don't even get a chance to play games because they can't get a team to come here, that then makes your varsity team, the program, the strong and in general, I'm supportive of doing things and strengthening those opportunities.
Thank you. Great, all right, we'll have a second, we'll have a second opportunity. So approval of the minutes, November nineteenth. Does anyone have any changes or seen anything? I did not. The motion to accept the minutes is burned, seconded by Sheila. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, absence, okay, one extension for, two, two abstentions, okay, for attendance. Great, all right, so student report, we don't, we have a student?
He's not, they're not available, so I have some of what they wanted to share included in my principal's report for you.
Okay, go for it, you're up.
Okay.
Thanks.
So we were just together a few, two weeks ago, so we gave you a lot of information, so tonight's is a little bit shorter. But we just welcomed everyone back after the Thanksgiving holiday. Winter sports have started following, you know, a very successful fall season for us. Last time, we recognized Coach Brickley for being named Golf Coach of the Year and Ellie England for her cross-country achievements. And no sooner or later did we receive more notification on additional recognition. So Chris Sanborn, I would have recognized you whether you're here or not, but he was named Coach of the Year. And Emmett Nosman, senior for us, was named Division Two Player of the Year. So again, the winter season has big shoes to fill according to these recognitions. But we are underway and I just wanted to share my congratulations to those, to those two. We're looking forward to the downtown holiday parade this weekend. The Plymouth High School band will be marching, so if you're there, they'll have their banner. Many of our kids have been practicing out in the parking lot in a little route that they've been playing, so that's been fun to see. In addition to that, I know you always like to know of this, the winter concert is December tenth. It's not a board at night, so you're free to go, not following a meeting at seven PM at the Silver Center. It's always an amazing show, so if you're available, please join us. Additionally, I would like to congratulate our Granite State Challenge Team. Those two advisors, Jay Bogarty and Troy Harris, take on this every year and we have historically competed very well. In the preliminary rounds, though, we received the highest score of all thirty-five teams competing. So we did receive some state recognition from that, so I just wanted to, I wanted you to know that and I wanted to name the kids and congratulate them. The team consists of Norman Sackett, Max Shemansky, Claire Kirkenberg, Mason Blue, Abe Hankins, Yuri Paul, Lena Fish, Aaron Lee, and Reagan Theleland. Their competitions, they're in practice rounds now and then their competitions will be January eleventh at eight thirty. They will be taped, so I might try to get a link out to you if anyone wants to watch that. But congratulations to all of those kids, that's a, that's a, that's a really nice achievement. And the only other thing I have for you folks tonight that I'll need approval on, Mr. Gunn is well out ahead of the All-State Music Festival in April. But I do have his overnight field trip for April third through the fifth. It's in Concord. I do have the itinerary that I won't share with you now because I can't imagine if you want an April itinerary. But I do know that some of you have gone to see them perform in Concord, so I'll bring that itinerary back in April for you to see. But I do student motion, you'll stay overnight for that festival. And that's it.
Great, who would like to make that motion and state that motion? So.
I'm in All-State Music Festival Overnight Trip in April.
I'll make that motion.
All right, seconded by all, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, committee meetings are December seventeenth unless needed for additional budget. We don't have any, we already did the summary of the last meetings at our last, our last meeting in November. Discussion items, budget review.
Sure, so we reviewed the first draft last, a couple of weeks ago. There's a couple of minor changes in there because faculty can submit track changes until December first, so that's the, changed the bottom line a little bit. You're up one point nine percent in appropriations. We reviewed the significant increases and decreases at the last meeting, so if you had a chance to review it, I think this would be the time to ask any questions or if you want to move in any direction. The last page attached is the revenue page, which includes, you know, what we're expecting for adequacy. There's a couple of unknowns, but we're budgeting for similar amounts given what, I'm not sure what we're going to get for federal grants next year, but we're budgeting what we typically get. So I'm not sure if that's going to change, if what we get for IDEA grants, which is your special ed allocation and your Title I grants may change as well. But right now, we're sticking with what we have and going from there. There's some, some uncertainty with that piece. Other than that, there's no other big changes. Like I said, we reduced a position in the eleven hundred account, which is your regular education account. And then you did need to add a special educator to the twelve hundred account. So those are the big changes. There's no big projects in the budget. The lights are being discussed as a separate issue, so that is not included in the base budget here. Any questions or any?
Dan?
I just wanted to add, one thing that is not in the revenue, one thing, known thing that's not in the revenue page yet is you recently executed an agreement with Esquany School District.
Yeah.
And we've requested their estimate as pursuant to the agreement of how many students they would anticipate sending here next year. I know that there's a posted school board meeting of that district for Thursday night. So I would anticipate by the next time we're all together, I should be able to add that revenue if they do project these students to your revenue.
So, you know, at twenty-two thousand five hundred ten students, that could be well over two hundred thousand, which again, was not in this equation, but.
Correct.
Would essentially be.
Yeah, so you just sign that and then again, for those in the public that don't know, there was an agreement signed with Bridgewater, Hebron and Groton districts to allow their students to come to the high school. They would be paying full cost per pupil plus any additional costs, no, they don't get a seat at the board or anything. So it's a traditional way for us to get revenue from those towns. There's about thirty-seven kids total in the high school there. And they're thinking, they sent out a survey, thinking that they were going to get, I think, they sent out, sent it out to forty people. They got ten back saying they'd come to, they're interested in Plymouth, but they only got half of the amount of the surveys back. So they're still trying to work out those kinks, but it's definitely an opportunity for the Pembroke Baker district to collect revenue as well and for us to boost our enrollment.
And then Kyla, can you just state, and again, I think it's important that the audience hears that, our decrease, our decreases and what that total was and what are increases that again are out of our control. It's no luxury, this is just.
So what I went over the last?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll go over that.
It's important.
Real quick, so the regular education, the eleven hundred account, which is on your first page, which is the bulk of your budget. The eleven hundred account is up forty-one thousand one forty-one and that's with the decrease of one teacher. And the increase in that bottom line is due to new staff that are coming in or other benefits as well as track changes on the pay scale as well. Special education, the twelve hundred account, we've just been notified by the state that we will be receiving less aid for special education. If you, there's something called catastrophic aid, that if a student who has behavioral issues or significant issues that have to be placed at a district, we can typically recoup for a lot of that money if they exceed three and a half times what your cost per pupil is. The state is by law supposed to pay us a hundred percent of that back. In the past ten years, we've gotten sixty percent of that and we're going to be even getting less after that. They're cutting that again, so there's going to be less funding. They just didn't budget it. I think you remember a couple of years ago, I told you there was a law that was put into place, again, an unfunded mandate, extending special ed services till the age of twenty-two. So that whole extra year, it is typically students with very complicated needs. The cost in statewide, they're seeing that and they can't fund it back. So that's just some of those laws that we really don't have control of. The other piece under special education you should know is that if there's a student from one of this Pembroke Baker districts that goes to a charter school somewhere else, Concord, wherever, the Pembroke Baker district, the local district, is responsible for paying special ed services to those kids that don't, that don't go to school in this building.
And that again is a law?
Correct, that's a law too. So it, you know, the foster care law as well, if a child is pulled from the town of Plymouth and gets put with their family in Laconia, Plymouth is paying the bill until the child is adopted. So it's, when you see special ed, it, it kind of encompasses homeless, the transient population. You know, all those charter school pieces kind of falls under that chunk there. So it really, it's not all, it's not all about the kids in this building, but it's just, it's, it's a tough, it's a moving target, I will say, for any school budget. So you see, that's up three hundred and thirty-one thousand and it could be for services or out of district placements. And out of district placements have gone up as far as cost and there's just less of them. Speech, occupational therapy and physical therapy, which is associated with students with special education, has gone up a little bit by forty-three thousand four ninety-one. SAU services is up twenty-eight thousand eight twenty-three. That is based on a formula, there's nothing new in the, in the, in the budget at the SAU office. It's fifty percent ABM, fifty percent equalized valuation, split out. Custodial services is up, current cost of maintenance, repairs, supplies, energy costs and then staffing exchanges has gone up to just keep, keep the maintenance of the building going. And then transportation is up seventeen thousand two seventy-one. Again, under that transportation is not just your bus contract, but it includes special education transportation and homeless transportation, which the district is responsible for. Again, one of those moving targets. Significant decreases. Applied technology programs, so that's your vocational, oh, it used to be called vocational CTE. And that is because there's a lot of change in staff there, so we brought some new teachers in at a lower rate and administrator. Same with the coordinator for that program, again, came in at a lower rate. Principal's office went down, we have a new principal after a longtime principal left, so there were some savings there. Principal and interest, so that's gone down fourteen thousand two eighty. And those, right now, your principal and interest cost is your energy performance contract from a few years ago and then the career tech renovation from a few years ago. And then the health insurance, GMR does not exist anymore. So all plans that PRHS has is between a two and a five percent increase and those are exact costs. So the health insurance surprisingly is down a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. So that was a big, that was a, a good break for us.
Kyla, can you talk about that? You know, the abbreviations are hard sometimes for people, GMR, explain that.
I'll have Dan explain that.
Sure. Excuse me, under previous methodology that Health Trust, the risk pool that you participate in to provide health insurance plans to the employees, previous methodology, they issued in October every year, something called the GMR, which stood for guaranteed max, maximum rate. So for example, if the GMR was ten percent, they were guaranteeing for budgetary purposes that your rate would go up more than, no more than ten percent in the following year. And for a variety of reasons, including regulatory pressure and some restructuring in the rate setting process at Health Trust, they now are issuing final rates. And so if I could just step back for a minute, when the final rates were issued in April, even if a higher increase was warranted based on utilization, they would stick to that ten percent. And if a lower rate was warranted, a lower rate would be issued. There was concerns that are from a variety of sources about that methodology. So the Health Trust Board voted in August to eliminate the GMR process, just issue a firm rate for the following year, one that would not be reduced or increased either direction once the final rates, well, excuse me, once the new year starts in July one. So it's more of a firm number that the district can count on and will prevent them from suffering losses, Health Trust from suffering losses if the utilization goes above what that GMR would have been historically.
Thank you. So that would mean an increase.
So the last budget was one point nine two, but with the couple of those track changes, it did go to one point nine three. And then on the right-hand column you'll see is the default budget. So that was added in because it is an SB two district, so the default budget is listed on the warrant articles as well.
Which is very close, right? Am I reading that correctly?
About two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay. All right, and our, just to let people know, just to review with the board, our goal number three, limit the core budget increase to three percent annually and we're at one point nine here. Questions for Kyla, Dan, et cetera? From the board? Clarifications? Thank you, Kyla.
I have a comment, Kyla.
Paul?
So how many students are actually receiving special ed services?
I would say I'm probably seventy-ish. Do you have, do you have a number? Am I, what, you have eighty, oh, I have eighty? In the, in this building, yeah.
And what's the population unit?
Six fifty.
The only reason I bring that up is because there's nothing we can do about it because it's all mandated by law. But your twelve hundred line, your eleven hundred line, your twelve hundred line is more than half of the eleven hundred line. So for eighty students, we're paying more than half of what we're paying for the rest of the students. But I know there's nothing we can do about it because by law, but it's really something we should, we should try to change somehow at some point. we should, we should try to change somehow at some point. And I know I've run into this before, sitting on a different board, it's always the way it is, but I wish at some point the state or the federal government would figure out a way to lessen it for everybody, especially since they're cutting your funding now.
Thanks, Paul. So.
Our last, this is the last meeting before the hearing.
Right, so the question is, do we want to move this budget? And Dan, just quickly, can you go over the total with the revenues? So basically, just summarize the brand total minus the revenues that do not include. Bottom line is, I mean, I can read it, but I think it's just good to say it out loud.
So the budget that's in front of you now, with an appropriation of eighteen two thirty-five, four thirty-eight, minus known revenues at this time, or anticipated revenues of three point nine million, with a couple of, at least one addition that we're anticipating from the Pesquahone School District, would be a district assessment of fourteen point three million. Are you asking for comparatives versus current year, or what do you think?
Sure, yeah, sure, do a little bit of comparison.
That, that is a change in, once again, before that additional revenue is added in, that's a change in net assessment of five hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and two.
Can you say that again, the change is how much?
Five hundred and seventy thousand three oh two, and that would come down with additional revenues added in. For example, once we hear back from the Pesquahone District on their anticipated numbers.
And as far as the breakdown, we're waiting on Canton for final numbers out of the entire SAU school district?
For the current year, no, we actually, just midday today, the Canton assessed valuation was posted in the RA portal, so I can share this year's sheet, if you'd like.
Sure, that'd be great.
I think it's, so as someone mentioned earlier, it's important to recognize when seeing these twenty-three versus twenty-four rate and changes, both from a dollar-figure decrease and/or percentage, that most of the towns in the, in this district have gone through a significant revaluation in the last year. In particular, Canton, Rumney and Thornton went through significant changes in the valuation of the town. So it's just a, it's a pretty fairly simple mathematical equation that would have, you know, if the spending stays the same and the evaluation goes up a hundred percent, the tax rate's gonna go down fifty percent, it's just a direct correlation. So I have to take any questions if I can be helpful.
And I'm pretty, I imagine most people in the audience know seven districts, Ashland, Canton, Holden, is Plymouth, Rumney, Thornton, Wentworth, Paye for this building. It's not just a few towns.
So like you said, one piece of clarification of that, that those are the seven towns that the tax rate for this district go into those towns' tax rates, but there are two other towns in the SAU that just aren't part of this, and the revenue from those towns comes off the top before the assessment happens, that being Ellsworth and Water Bowl Valley, they both paid tuition into this building, they're just not members of this district.
Thanks for adding that. Okay, where are people?
I have just another question. The special education that's on this yellow sheet that's up, the three hundred and thirty-one thousand, I know it's a moving target all the time, but is there, is that what we're anticipating right now? Those two, the out-of-district placement and the other services is all we're anticipating for now?
Right, so, so this additional special educator is due to need. So it's not necessarily related to a number. You get, it depends on what the disability is. So given the, who's coming into the building, or who's coming back from a placement or from somewhere, we need additional staff to cover that, that, those students in the building. So that's for the additional educator. And then the out-of-district placement is up, it's just based on where students are placed or if they're in foster care, or you're paying for, you know, public school services too. That's all under that out-of-district line.
And then Dan, can you talk a little bit about the surplus that we had and what we chose to do? And maybe, sorry, am I putting you on the spot?
No, I don't mind.
Just, okay.
So at the end of the previous year, you, the Board has authorized retained three hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And that's money that sits in the, in the district's accounts that could be, for example, last year, the Board voted to commit a portion of that number to be a revenue the following year, as in this fall, to reduce the impact of the new budget. The Board could vote to commit any portion of that as a revenue for next fall, which would change the bottom line that we were just talking about for the proposed budget for the FY twenty-five, twenty-six school year. There are other potential uses for that, the Board has broad authority to spend that in a lawful manner, once a hearing is held.
And if we wanted to go, say, from one point nine three to one point five, what would that, is that?
So that wouldn't change this, that wouldn't change that number because that number is just the appropriation, the expenditure authorities.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But if you, so the number that we talked about a couple of minutes ago of the change in net assessment, the five hundred and seventy thousand dollar number, you could impact that number by committing a portion of your retained funds to the revenue side.
Okay, how, where are people at with that?
What did they commit last year at this time?
So the number that's on the revenue sheet of the budget that you just handed out, in the current year column, the left column, which is labeled twenty-four, twenty-five tax basis, the unreserved fund balance of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, that's the amount that you committed last year from the prior year's retained fund balance to offset this fall's tax rate.
Okay.
And in a similar methodology or way, you could commit any portion of the three twenty-eight, four thirty-seven currently held and retained funds to next fall's revenue stream. Is that clear?
Very.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So that three hundred or whatever?
Three twenty-eight, four thirty-seven.
About three hundred.
Yep.
If we had unanticipated special ed costs that like, you know, a second out of, or third or fourth or whatever, out of district placement, would that, would we be able to use that or not? Or would that?
It's a great question, it's why we always recommend that boards consider using, having this tool in the toolbox, getting the authority to retain funds. So right now, that three twenty-eight could be used for any lawful method, including, for example, a new special ed case moves into the, into the district and you need to support them with services or replacement or what have you, that, that money's available for that purpose. If you voted to commit a, which is why, if you're gonna consider committing a portion of retained funds to be a revenue to offset next fall's tax rates, I would recommend you not commit all of it, in the event that you have an emergency like the one you just described, or an unanticipated expense like the one you just described, but some portion, yes, it's an appropriate use of retained funds, it's unanticipated expenses, such as those associated with a student.
And you've committed a portion the past several years, not the full, at this point?
Paul.
What do you feel comfortable retaining?
Well, I don't mean to be disrespectful, Paul, that, that's, I, I don't know that my comfort is.
No, I was directing it more towards.
I apologize.
Well, what have we done in the past? How has it been?
It's been about half, so it's about a hundred and fifty, like in that, in that range, right there.
That's what I was thinking.
I don't, what was the exact, three hundred?
So last year's was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven.
Yeah.
And this year's available fund balance that was retained at the end of last year is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Right, so at this point in the year, or about halfway through, if there's any changes, it's not gonna be a full cost anyways. So.
So what, what you may want to do is move the proposed budget, this is the expenditure side, to the budget here, and look at, I could provide you, I assume you're gonna meet prior to that budget hearing, you typically do, I could provide you with an updated.
Was it right before, that same night?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, yeah, that night.
I could provide you with an updated status on this year's budgets, expenditures, et cetera. And that may indicate where we are for the current year in terms of the opportunity, because the other thing that would fall into that revenue side for next fall would be any unretained funds at the end of the current school year. So let's say, for example, you voted tonight to commit, say, a hundred and fifty thousand of your retained fund balance to be a revenue of the fall. You may revisit that number later in the year, or you may be able to provide additional information later in the year about what additional funds are gonna be available at the end of this year if this year's budget isn't fully spent.
Because, you know, just, just to throw this out there, we have some structural issues ahead too. Not to make things any more depressing, sorry, but we, we also have Northwing.
You have the design being done now, but the, the.
AC one, AC three.
Which is the end of that, pretty much, right?
Yeah, we're beyond the end of that, and they give big kudos to the, you know, maintenance staff that you had on in prior years, keeping that going.
And they're able to maintain now.
Yep.
And then we'll just do it when we can.
When we can, yeah. When do we typically, when did we commit that one fifty-seven?
December.
At this time.
The December meeting is when you typically did it.
People's thoughts, do we wanna?
I think we should commit the, save a hundred and fifty and commit the rest.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
We'll retain a hundred and fifty thousand and commit the rest to the tax base.
Seconded by, Greg, a discussion, are we good, have we?
Can I have, I know the Board, just, if it would be helpful, I would recommend that the wording be, not to retain, but, because there's a portion, it's all retained already, that, I think the motion would be most appropriate to be to commit a hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars of the retained fund balance to be a revenue to offset taxes in the fall of twenty twenty-five.
Sounds fine by me.
You agreed to that, Paul, Greg, you agreed to that, Greg?
Thank you, appreciate the.
Could you just repeat that number?
Sure, one, seven, eight, four, three, seven.
Any other?
Is that, I'm sorry, Dan, is that, that number comes from?
That's funds retained in prior school years, twenty twenty-three, four, twenty-four school year, correct?
So it's a portion of the three hundred and twenty-eight thousand is what you're saying?
Right, so if you take the three twenty-eight, four thirty-seven minus the number, I just say you're left with one fifty. So it's the same net effect.
Okay. Ready to vote?
Was, I'm sorry, was there a second?
Yes, great.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, okay, all right.
Do you want to move the budget forward to the hearing?
Yep, where are we, where are we at with the budget? At a one point nine three. What do we need to do, make a motion to move it? Or make the motion to move the budget to the budget here?
One second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, okay. All right. And athletic fields lights, number two.
Do you mind if we move up the advertising policy, it kinda goes hand in hand here? So out of committee, or, or from committee, there was a proposal at the last meeting for the advertising policy to be sunset, the previous one. There was a new one drafted in your packet, and there were some copies for the public as well. And it basically allows us to fundraise in a tasteful way. I think the whole, the previous one was not to have the fields too cluttered with signage and whatever it may be. So we can have donors advertising. There's multiple ways to do it now, through social media, through announcing, through smaller plaques, how to not put it all on the taxpayer, and give us that flexibility to, to offset that by doing some of this, to keep kids here. So I gave the first draft to you, to all of you with the last meeting, so didn't know if you wanted anything changed or you were happy with that. And basically, it says obviously nothing that would interfere with the educational environment or be distracting. You see lots of fields have temporary signage, or they do announcing more during games and stuff to recognize donors or, or sponsorships or advertising.
And again, just to reiterate this, we can change as we go, we can, I mean, it's ultimately the Board's approval to, we would approve every sponsorship that came in. So this is definitely. So, yeah, do people have any questions about that? Are we ready to, yes, Paul?
I like the policy, the other thing is, I think the placement of the advertisement should be up to Todd or Janet. Because I could see fights over where they want to place their advertisements. I don't see that spelled out anywhere in the policy.
No. No, I left it pretty broad to be tasteful, non-disruptive and aligned with the school's mission and, and values. Obviously, nothing related to alcohol, tobacco, gambling, drugs, violence, et cetera.
Well, I think, are you talking, Paul, where it actually says placement of advertisements, that section? Does subject to approval mean?
Well, I'm just thought, subject to approval means you're approving the advertisement, you're not approving where it's being put.
So I could, you could put subject to approval by building administration? And that covers Janet or her designated?
And just to, just to let, I mean, we know this, some of us on the Board, but just to say this out loud, you did some research on this policy with other schools, and these were successful models, and then you kinda tailored it to us?
Yeah, so I just, you know, I looked at other high schools similar to us. Todd has seen some of the advertising at different fields as well. We've seen some that don't look great and some that do. There's definitely some that get stuck with overcrowding or, or just too much, but there's, this, this gave it enough of a boundary and a parameter that we can be careful with how we do it, so.
And we've, we've already had generated interest in that?
Yes.
Just to say that out loud, people are very interested in advertising on our property.
Yes.
So that's, will help us with the expense of the lights. So do people, are people comfortable with this second reading and making it a policy this evening?
Do we need to amend that portion to add by building administration?
Yeah.
Yeah, with that change in mind and approve it tonight, so.
Yep.
Do you wanna make that?
Um, well, you you made the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the advertising policy with the additional wording of.
Approval by building administration under the placement of advertisements.
Yes, thank you.
Start with that, discussion, any, no, alright, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, okay. Great, now back up to. Athletic fields and lights, and in that discussion, you're, we're gonna start to talk about Warren article of athletic field and lights, that's.
So they kinda go hand in hand.
Yeah.
Um, so first, first, uh, you have the project, I had Dan come up with some sample wording, if you wanna pass around your sample warrants.
This has more than this Warren article on it, just to be clear.
What?
This sample warrant has all the articles that we've contemplated.
That's fine.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss both of number two and three.
Yes. So the question's been, how do we fund it, how do we, how do we offset the costs? Uh, how do we move forward from there? It's, since you represent so many towns in this district, we've often talked about sending it out to the voters to choose. So, we drafted the Warren article to reflect the total cost of the lighting of the fields. Um, with a, with a note in there saying that any money collected from fundraising or donations would be offset, obviously. You have, you do have to put the total cost of the Warren article. In in there, you can't adjust the total, you have to put the total in there that, you know, it will be raised by taxation or offset by the. Um, fundraising efforts that will be put into place, so just like most articles where you you either raise it by taxation or not. So that is the sample, do you wanna go over anything, Dan, as far as that goes? It would have to, sorry, it would have to be a fifty percent vote, it's not a uh super majority vote uh by all the towns, by ballot. And then if if you move forward with it, then we would, I think through committee and through volunteers, we would have to get some help as far as um donations, there's definitely interest. I have received multiple calls from not only individuals, but some businesses that are interested in it. So it's, it's something that that can help, uh, but I think it is, we've talked about a community decision. The piece on the Warren article that um. Needs to be talked about, if it's, if it's voted down. We can't move for, and it's a no means no article, so if it's voted down, then there's no, even if we get the fundraising for it. It can't be done till the following budget cycle, correct?
Correct, we reconsidered the following year.
The follow, so it can't, you can't, so if it's, if it was a no in March, we couldn't hurry up, fundraise for it and have it built in this summer. You'd have to wait. Until reconsideration till the following year.
If you need money, if you're at the point where you need.
No, like, say somebody came in the day after the Warren article and said, I will give you the seven hundred fifty thousand that you need. It's a no means no article, it wouldn't, you could only reconsider it the following year.
And we couldn't have like a special hearing?
To go for a special district meeting, you'd have to get court order and that would require an emergency, and I would strongly suggest that no court would consider this an emergency.
Yeah. But you can just go into the, if you get somewhat, you know, that happened, you can just reorganize and do do something different the following year.
Yep, okay.
And then it's, sorry.
I just wanna, so what you're saying, what I'm hearing you say is, if this, if we put this out there, it's seven hundred forty nine, whatever it is. And it's a yes, for fifty percent vote, yes, we can move forward with going to get whatever fundraising we need. So if someone were to come, or we can reach out to other people who have shown interest and move forward. But if, if it's a no, we do nothing until the following year, am I right in saying that?
Correct.
But can we, could we fundraise in the interim because the advertising?
You could fundraise.
Yeah, so, uh, to be clear, the way this article is written in front of you. It's purposely flexible to the extent that you're getting the approval to spend seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in rough numbers on this. And you're advising the public that you intend to fundraise, and the way the cycle works is you have the vote in March. And the vote, as we talked about with the regular budget, there's a projected revenue stream to offset the budget, and the balance is taxation, right? So similarly here, you you, there's no projected revenue here, but you're saying you you plan to fundraise. Every year, we go through the process of having that March vote on a variety of things, and then some of them have revenue projected with them. And then on September one is when we finalize revenue, we, it's called, it's it's a process with the Department of Revenue Administration where we update our projected revenues. And it's those numbers that the DRA then uses to establish the tax rate of the fall. So, we, what what this would allow us to do is get the authority to spend the seven hundred forty nine nine ninety eight. And then start fundraising right away, and any amount we knew we were gonna have. Towards the project, fundraising, advertising, sponsorship, what have you, we would report as a revenue on September one, and it would reduce the amount to be raised through taxation. You could add additional language to restructure it, but that's the basic premise.
But what if it gets voted down, can we still fundraise?
If it gets voted down, you could still fundraise, yes, and you would hold those funds, and you would, you would hold those funds.
It would, you would go towards the following year.
On on, on what's called a balance sheet, which is, you'd hold those funds on the side, not part of the operating budget, and go for approval again in the following year.
Right.
And maybe if you spent that year fundraising, you you might come up with different wording, saying seven forty nine with. Maybe you raise the whole seven forty nine to be, to come from donations, no, no amount to come from taxation, that sort of thing.
So let me jump in, so for some of us, three quarter million and some people in the audience, it's certainly a lot of money. You know. I guess my question is, can we identify in this article tax dollars to not exceed a certain amount?
Abs, yes, you you certainly could, you could say, you could add into that first paragraph. Such as, at some number to come from donations and fundraising, no, not more than. The difference to come from local taxation.
So, if if that were the case, and it was voted yes, and the fundraising number wasn't reached. Then you would not be able to go forward because you wouldn't be able to put it into taxation.
Correct. But what you could do is you could. You could treat it as a non, what's called a non lapsing appropriation, continue to raise funds, raise the, let's say it's a dollar from taxation and the the rest from fundraising. You raise the dollar taxation, you hold that in a, in a fund for non lapsing appropriations. And continue to fundraise until you get to the full seven forty nine, nine ninety eight, and then you pull the trigger on the project.
And Dan, can you talk about?
Execute the project, excuse me, whatever, it's a term of excuse.
Can you also just go over with everybody, um, you know, again, we revisit what's left at the end of the year, and can that go towards this as well? So we would have fundraising.
Could, could, could fund balance go towards that?
Yes, we chose.
I I'd really like to get some additional clarification on that concept and come back to you with a, with a better answer than I'd, rather than.
Okay.
Swinging at it right now.
And I have a question. So my understanding from one of the meetings previously is that this number is the high, highest number that we would be um. Charged basically, or billed for the lights, but realistically, we thought it, maybe you can answer, that realistically.
Yeah, we had.
It could come in lower?
So that was the highest number, um, and that's with the built in contingency.
So it definitely could come in lower, like it does with some of our project, like any of our construction projects.
Yeah. Yeah.
But again, the further you put it out, the larger that number goes.
Yeah.
And a bigger bang for a buck if we do both fields at the same time.
Absolutely, yeah.
I do remember that.
Yeah.
And ledge is out back and that's gonna be an issue.
And then, yeah, well, they have planned for it in that pricing.
Okay.
Yeah, that was already planned for.
That's already anticipated.
They assume that they are going to hit ledge, that is already in that.
Thanks for reminding us.
And it's actually, that's how they designed it purposely for the ledge.
Question. Yes, Barbara. Not sure how to phrase this, and I don't wanna. Be a downer on this, but if this article did not pass, if this Warren article did not pass, but. The general public wants to continue to seek for its passing in the future and fundraise. And set that money aside towards this, is there a time limit on how long you can keep doing that? And hold on to the money for this specific project, what happens to that funding?
It's, it it would, it would stay in a segregated account of funds raised for this purpose.
But if you try two or three or four years, you're still not getting there, is there a limit, a time limit, what happens to that funding if it looks like? We've moved on from that, we've got another idea, what happens?
So, that's a very difficult question to answer because the the, there's, we come into this. Situation most frequently with student activity accounts, when funds are donated for the class of twenty twenty four class trip. If those funds aren't used, you can't give the funds back to the students, you can't, unless you keep a list of the donors, you can either. Donated funds need to either be used for the purpose which they were donated for, or returned to the donor. So, what we did, several years ago, we had a situation with a ski jump.
Yes.
And we took a lot of donations, and we kept a very exact record of every dollar that came in and who it came from, and um. The the premise was that if the ski jump didn't, if if the project didn't happen, we would return all those funds, fortunately, the project happened. Um, there's still a small amount of money in that account, um, and when that all happened, a a. Process was formed by which the funds could be requested, the leftover funds could be requested, but they had to go towards the ski jump, so most recently. It may be two to three years ago, the ski jump needed some uh repair work. And it was funded by those funds because they had been donated for the ski jump, so take it forward to this example. If if you raised money over a three or four year period and the, and the project never happened, I would envision you returning the money to the donors.
So you'd have to keep good records.
Well, that happened with the track, the track piece too, they had to return money to the donors.
That's, that's, that's what we do. The, the most recent track piece?
Yeah, they collected.
Yeah, they cut, I, see, I.
No, before.
Okay, yeah, previous one, not.
Yeah, yeah, previous.
Has, has.
There's been a couple of them.
Has there ever been a time limit on how long you could keep trying to reach that goal before someone said, that's it, you've reached the limit?
I'm not aware of any, of of what regulatory authority would make that statement.
Okay.
Right. Well, I'm just wondering, should we consider changing the wording then to put a max amount to raise by taxation? And. You know, in that way, it's a, it's a more palatable thing for, I mean, from my point of view. I would feel a lot more comfortable voting on something if I knew that. If we didn't raise X amount, that we weren't gonna have to come up with seven hundred fifty thousand.
Would you have, Dan, would that restrict the timeframe um of the project?
I don't, if a, if a, if a, if the voters voted in the majority to move forward with the project, it would be, as I say, a non lapsing appropriation. So, you could say, now, getting back to question, the question asked earlier about fund balance, you do have that. Retained fund balance, still, you could commit a portion of that to this project, so after the motion that was made earlier to commit a portion to.
Yeah.
Revenue next fall, so there's a hundred and fifty thousand left. You could conceivably say. To authorize the seven hundred fifty thousand for the lights, a hundred and fifty to come from retained fund balance. I'm just gonna throw out a number, three hundred to come from, uh, three hundred thousand to come from. Fundraising and up to three hundred thousand from taxation. And there, at at that point, you fundraise, and when you revise your revenues on September one, if you've gotten four hundred thousand fundraising instead of three hundred. Then you'd only raise two hundred in taxes instead of three hundred.
Right. Right.
Cause you'd update your revenues in September.
Right, okay, right, Paul.
Yeah, I think I'd rather see how much we can actually raise before we even put a warrant out, love. And if you, you know, if it's voted down, then. We're stuck anyway, if we don't get enough money fundraising that people don't wanna pay for it, and we also have a warrant for the collective bargaining agreement, it's gotta go out there. I think it's time to give the taxpayers a little bit of a break, I mean, it's not like we level funded the budget, it is up one point nine percent. Assessments and all the town, town, prop taxes going up, and you know, even twenty cents on a dollar. It adds up after a while, it's twenty cents on a thousand. On top of everything else, I I'd much rather feel more comfortable knowing what we can raise through advertising and fundraising and proceed from there.
So are you saying that you wouldn't wanna go forward with it even if?
No, I'd rather, I'd rather find out what we can fundraise first.
But what I'm asking is, would you wanna see the whole thing funded?
I wanna see how much we can get first, if we can get half fundraised or three quarters fundraised, then I'd feel a lot more comfortable putting in a warrant. But if we can only get a hundred thousand out of the seven hundred forty eight thousand or whatever it is, seven forty nine, no, I wouldn't be comfortable putting out to taxpayers.
But if we limit what would come from taxation.
What are you gonna limit it to though?
Well, what, I mean, you said half, so if you limited it to, I don't know, three seventy five or something.
How long do we have before we have to actually put the warrant out, have to approve for a warrant? Do we have to do that at the budget hearing?
Uh, so the last, so the last day to um. Post the warrant this year is Monday, January twenty seventh. And that warrant has to be fully signed by this board, so you would wanna sign your warrant. I would assume that Tuesday before that, or two Tuesdays before that, I think, is it the twenty first? That is the. You'd wanna sign your warrant either at the end of your budget hearing, assuming no changes were made, or. At the following school board meeting, so that it could be posted in all the towns by the twenty seventh. So. I have an, an idea just came to me, if I may.
Yeah.
May I? Given what you said, Paul, you could conceivably craft a warrant article, and I'd wanna get DRA to approve this wording, but. To spend, to come from fundraising and fund ba, a combination of fundraising and fund balance if available. No, maybe you could clearly say either a dollar to be raised for taxation, some small number, or or none, or whatever, whatever, whatever the board feels, you know? And that would, and and specify that it's a non lapsing appropriation, and that way, once you had the funds raised. And or fund balance available to commit to the project, you could execute the project.
I mean, I guess my feeling is. If we think that this, this is important and we wanna go forward with it, but at the same time, not burden the taxpayers. If we limit what we're willing to say to raise by taxation, that, you know, and if we don't, if we, if it gets voted down at that amount. Then, I mean, that's a clear message as well, that, no, we, you know, we don't wanna spend a hundred thousand, two hundred, three hundred, whatever, on the lights. But it at least gives us the opportunity to, to raise a bunch and, you know, possibly have the fund balance and all that.
It it may be easier to solicit donations once you have an approved project.
Well, yeah, that's kinda what I'm thinking too, because it's a more of.
Is there a time limit, Liza, on when they need to know?
Yeah, so, once, once we, let's say, we get through, we get all the funding, whether it be from a combination or whatnot.
Cause we need the full funding to pay them.
We would order the equipment right off and everything we need, that's like a ten week waiting period. And then, when it gets here, we're looking at. And then, when it gets here, we're looking at about three weeks installation.
So, you'd have to have the fundraising wrapped up fair, we'd be pressed on the fundraising for the end of the year, is what I'm saying, so.
Yes, absolutely. If you're waiting till the end of the year, that will not be something that we would be able to make.
Right, that's my only piece with the fundraising.
How long does the estimate go for?
For this year? That, the, the estimate is good for this year?
This summer. This year, oh yes, yeah.
For this, for it to happen this summer.
The further, I mean, you know, again, like I've said before, the more you put it out, the more that number's gonna go up, just like everything.
I, I think, um, I think what I'd like to see is putting it out there with the wording that Dan gave us in regards to a certain dollar amount for, um, to be raised by taxation, a certain amount by fundraising. And I think it also, Paul, tell me if you still feel that differently, but I feel like it covers what you're saying as well. We put a cap on where it's gonna be at in regards to um, raising the money through taxes. Um, and I think it's just a matter of, to me, I feel like just figuring out what that number would be, whether it's half or um, a little less. So, that's my, that's my thought. Barbara?
I believe I heard earlier that it was someone figured out twenty cents on the taxes per thousand, one cent per, per thousand. Was that in reference to this?
Um, the, the only time I'm speaking because you're looking, the only time, the only time I heard the twenty cent number this, this evening that I can recall
Yeah, I know.
was when the gentleman was talking about the solar array in Plymouth.
Oh, okay.
If, if, if you want me to calculate for you the impact of some number
Yes.
on each of the seven towns, I can do that fairly quickly for you.
Yeah, that's, what I'm looking for in my mind is what, to get this to go, let's say, half and half. Half taxation, half um, fundraising. What is that magic number that will increase the taxes? How many thousands? What is, you know, what I'm trying to get at?
Dan, I have that sheet.
How much would our tax rate be affected?
I'm, I'm gonna, I, I think that might be outdated from what I have. So, I'm gonna throw up a number out.
Okay.
So, let's say half the project were to be taxed, raised from taxation, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, based on the assessed valuations of the seven member towns this fall. It would impact the Ashland tax rate, seven cents, Hampton, eight cents, Olgnis, four cents, Plymouth, eleven cents, Rumney, eight cents, Thornton, six cents, and Wentworth, eleven cents. That's the impact of the tax rate of the three hundred fifty thousand dollar appropriation.
Which, I, I mean, I get what you're doing, Barbara, but at the end of the day, this is an eighteen million dollar, like, it's not just as simple as saying the lights are this, you know, there's just so much more. And there's four articles, one article that's, yeah, that's gonna have to be figured out. It's just, and what people are saying is that combination is certainly not eight cents, nobody, you know? So, it's just, it's tricky to even.
But I think it's fair for the public to know the impact that we're looking at to have this answer, yes.
For just the lights, for just the lights.
Just the lights.
But at the end of the day, they're just concerned with the, their bill. They don't, they don't.
Well, I, that's not what I'm hearing from the public. It's every, every single thing we have adds up.
That's what I'm hearing. It's not just the lights, it's all the increases.
But we, we have this that tells us both, most of what we've got now. If we're gonna do something additional and vote separately, people wanna know that, that impact, just like they wanna know the impact of number one, you know? So, I'm just trying to get that information as well.
Yeah, work it up. It's maybe less painful.
The other warrant articles, I mean, just talking about the other warrant articles, it's, there's, there's the support staff agreement, which is still in process. We don't have a number on that in the budget. And then, our regular, um, and that's it as far as, as far as that goes.
Right.
So, there's no much, no other discussion as far as those warrant articles.
Right.
So, the support staff and the lights is what you're saying, and our regular budget, operating budget?
Yep.
I don't know if this is something you're comfortable discussing or if you even know, but you said you've had interest. I mean, was there any, you know, I mean, it's, it's fine if Joe Smith says, I'm gonna give you fifty bucks towards the lights. Or if you, you know, if you have some major corporate donor that, you know, says, boy, we'd really like to have a, a sign on that field, you know, and we'd like to give you a big chip. I mean, do you have any?
We've had both.
Okay.
I would say as far as interest, as far as large donations and then smaller donations.
And um.
No commitment, obviously, because there's been no decision, but definitely folks that know what's happening and, and are willing to help.
Yes, no.
And then, is it gonna get tricky in terms of, I want to sponsor the football field, I don't wanna sponsor, like, how do we iron?
Well, I think you start with donations for now and then through committee if you wanna do any fundraising, um, tactics.
But I mean, if people come in and they wanna donate, you know, say they wanna sponsor and they're specific to which field, that'll kind of throw, yeah, down.
Well, then we, that would.
I just think you have to be really clear in separating donations and advertising.
Right.
Right? You're making a donation, you're donating to this project. You don't, you don't get to say where it is, right?
Sorry, so I should say. So, I'm questioning advertising.
Yeah, that's another story. That's, that's for the administration. I think if I change your policy, the administr, that's under the administration's jurisdiction.
That's. Yeah, but under donation, it's, it's just a donation.
Right, I get that. What I'm saying is if, like, say, all right, let me just, let me just do the math. Say we get sponsors for the football field of three hundred thousand and that covers the football field. Then we transition over to the soccer lacrosse field and figure out where we're at with that. Is that, because that math's gonna have to happen, right?
Well, wasn't the project lights?
Yeah, I disagree that, that.
Project is lights. We're donating to lights. Is that my understanding?
All right, yeah.
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 But if their sign wants to be at the football field and not the soccer field, is that real?
Advertising.
That's just.
Yes, so.
That's just the advertising piece.
Yeah, it could be where, doesn't have to be.
That was right through the policy.
You know, it's not like, you know, you're saying, oh, we're only gonna put things on the soccer.
Money would still go to the full project. The sign could go, either way.
Okay. And where the sign goes is just not, is a non-issue. We can make that work with that.
And we have no idea on the support staff, what we're really looking at for that either.
Oh, the support, they're still in negotiations.
And this would just be the increase, if there's an increase negotiated?
Yep.
How many support staff are there or do you know?
Uh.
Twenty-five.
What's that number, Paul?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah.
I would, I would just caution everyone about discussing this matter in public.
Yeah. Um, so, anyone prepared to make any motions on this? Is any, I mean, I'll make a motion.
Um, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven, well, whatever that number is, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty, ninety-eight dollars for the purpose of purchasing and installing lights for Zillius Field, the combined cycle lacrosse athletic fields with three hundred and fifty thousand coming from taxation and the remaining, well, four hundred approximately, three, no.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, I'd love you to.
The wording would be with up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from local taxation. And that way, you have to raise at least the three forty-nine, nine ninety-eight. And it correctly implies that if you raise more than the three forty-nine, nine eighty-eight, the three fifty will go down.
So, that, and then with the remainder to come from fundraising and, and unretained fund, or, no?
Fundraising and, fundraising, fundraising contributions.
Yeah, do we wanna put the fund balance in there or no?
Yeah, that's completely your discretion. You may not want to. It could, the contribution could come in the form of the board contributing from the fund balance.
Oh, okay, all right, then I like that one.
And, and we can say fundraising and that covers the sponsorship piece too?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, somebody wanna second that?
Please clarify, what was the?
Can, can you say it again?
That doesn't come out right.
So, if you review the article in front of you, it listed as article number three, I, I would suggest that after the words athletic fields in the third line, it would say, and this will all be reviewed by DRA prior to your next meeting, it would say with up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from general taxation. And those are the words that would be added after that word fields. The, we could, and, and if you, if it's in the motion, Bernie, please tell me. It would say with up to three hundred fifty thousand dollars to come from general taxation, the balance to come from contributions and donations, donations and contributions.
How is that gonna work though? I mean, how is that gonna work?
It, it, it works on the September one updating of revenues.
Yeah.
So.
It sounds like we have to have this money raised, three hundred fifty thousand dollars raised for the summer, but. Yeah, by April.
No, you're gonna have to, you have to have it raised by September one.
Not to buy the lights and. Not to buy the lights and get it installed at this price. This makes no sense.
No. No.
I mean, I think we're, we're handwringing here. We just need to vote, let, let them vote.
May I ask a question?
I hear what you're saying.
You know what I mean? Like, it's, none of this makes sense. It, it's up to the people. If they want it, they want it. If they don't, they don't. They're not gonna want it more. You know, the cost five hundred thousand versus seven fifty. I just don't see that happening. We're, 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 we're handwringing this to death and I just don't think it's gonna work either way. Yeah, so I think, let, let the people vote. If they don't want it, it's not gonna happen. That's just my opinion.
Barbara?
I was gonna ask this question before, but I need to ask it of her. I think she would have the answer. You had mentioned earlier the um, timeframe, if we said everything's all set today, right, today, there's gonna be, if I remember correctly, ten, a ten week wait for everything to arrive and be on site. Then three week, three weeks for the build. And then, is there a time period that you can't do anything with the field while it's settling or doing its thing? Okay, so it's thirteen weeks.
That, that's, if everything goes well, every screw, every mail order, everything is done. Yeah.
If, so, you wanna add a little on the end just in case.
Right. Absolutely.
So, have you sat down and looked at the calendar and backed that up to see what is the last possible deadline? We need to have our funding known?
By the vote.
Yeah.
Is what they need to, by the vote, which is why we, we originally wrote the warrant article to just say,
By what, by the vote?
So, once that happens, that gives them the go-ahead with, with most contracted services to get their people in order for the summer.
So, if the, if the date that we need to know this is the voting date in March, um, it gets voted on in March and we have to know right then and there that we're going to have whatever the warrant article says by donations or by taxation?
I would say we'd have to have everything that by then.
Correct, right.
So, if we vote in March, we have to have everything then?
Yeah, it's, to not guarantee that we're gonna have the remainder of this money.
I, I don't see how that, yeah.
Anything at that price.
Yeah, I don't see how that happens if we have to have some of it by donations, 'cause you won't have that till the vote, yeah.
That's why I was saying, it would condense the window. That, that's, I mean, we'd have to start now until March
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, a small window.
to raise whatever we're supposed to raise for fundraising.
Oh.
And then the vote to have it all ready to go, to say, all right, we're ready for the summer installation.
Right.
So, to keep fundraising beyond it, even if it's a yes, it's a trickier, like Greg was saying, um, because the company needs to get moving.
Right. It, it is not just parts, it's not just cost. We don't, we don't do the installation, you know, they have these giant crews
Yeah, it's all one. Yeah.
That, they're gonna get signed up for the work, you know, months ahead of time.
Right.
The one that, we're, we're doing these plannings, they're doing the same thing. So, the, I, that window is very, very small.
So, then, here's, here's a sort of ti, a question on timeline. Say to, we voted tonight for what I just proposed.
Mm-hmm.
Can you reach out to the people that said they were interested in donating and saying, this is what's on the table? Can you commit a figure? And then, if it passes, we would know, okay, yes, that we're, we've got that amount on the date of passage. And if that were to happen, and, you know, meanwhile, the sponsorships or whatever, and then you could continue to fundraise afterwards. Like, so say you got the three forty-nine, nine ninety-eight, the taxation went through for three fifty, but you could continue to fundraise even after the project was started to reduce the taxation.
To reduce, which, what is what we were gonna do originally is just continue, fundraise as much as we can to March and then continue, but we have the money and then it just gets offset, you know, with all the fundraising by September first. But yes, you can do the same thing with that piece. I just don't know how many, I, I have no idea on the figure for the donors.
I say we put it out to the towns and let them vote along with what Greg said.
On the whole amount.
On the whole amount.
With the fundraising note in there?
With the article that was, that's in front of here, without any commitment. That's, so that's what that does. That would say, you know, clearly, we're gonna, we're, we're authorizing seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're telling the voters, we're gonna try and raise money. If they vote, if the article's approved, you, you move, you move forward, you know, March thirteenth, whatever the day is after the vote, you issue a purchase order, because you know the money's coming. And then you continue to fundraise through September one to minimize the amount that's raised through taxation.
Yep.
But if, if we can't raise very much, then that burden does go onto the taxpayer.
That's right. And they have the ability to vote. They've already voted.
Yep.
They've already voted for it.
Right, but the bill hasn't gone out until, I mean, later that year.
I have a question. You may have already answered it, Dan, but why, we can't go fundraising after September first? Is that?
You can, but that's the deadline for submitting known revenues to impact the tax rate.
Oh, okay, okay.
Could you continue for the following year, like, you know, do a two-year cycle to keep lowering, like, could you keep that fund open? Or is that gonna be limited to the year that it's in the?
I'm gonna suggest to you that any further fundraising efforts would be in the form of advertising, not donations, and then be a general revenue to the district, which would go on the following year's budget revenue sheet where we identify a whole bunch of different, so, for example, there's a revenue line on your revenue page of your budget that says co-curricular for the, which at times in the past, gate receipts and admission tickets and things like that that have been collected, have been turned from the student activity account over the district as a revenue. This year, because that hasn't happened in several years, on the budget sheet that you saw earlier tonight, it's been moved from thirty thousand dollars to one dollar. Okay? But you could easily have a new line on your revenue sheet of advertising. And it would become a revenue to offset, just like all the other revenue lines, to offset the budget to come to that net number to be apportioned in the form of taxes.
So, let's, let's say in a perfect world, the budget, the, the lights get passed, we raise a lot of money, you know, whatever, we can raise a whole amount, let's say. The lights are paid for, but you could continue to have a revenue. whole amount, let's say, the lights are paid for, but you could continue to have a revenue stream every year for advertising, because it would be in.
Yes, because you've changed your policy.
It's for anything.
I wouldn't take donations for, unless you were to establish an expendable trust fund, which is a whole nother ball of wax.
Oh, yeah.
Right? I wouldn't take further donations for the project once the project's complete at the end of next summer.
Yeah.
But you could take additional advertising revenue very easily.
I don't think we could ask a donor to pay for lights that we've already paid for, that are already shining on games, that are being listed generally.
And to just, well, and I was just gonna say, if, you know, if this if that warrant article went through, we didn't get the money we thought we were getting. We have one point nine on the table already, we've got support staff on the table, I mean, we we could be seven or eight percent. Right? I mean, I'm just doing the math in my head. That could be a high number. And again, yes, I understand the taxpayers wanted that. Who gets out, who votes, you know, who understands everything, which I always feel like that's a little bit of an uphill battle sometimes. But that could be a huge increase. That that could really be a lot on people. That that's my thing, Greg, is that if it goes through, it's three quarter million, and we don't get the money we thought, that's
Yeah.
to people's tax bills, oh my god, I can't, I just, I can't, I don't wanna go there for that reason. That's my struggle.
Yeah.
Dan, are you able to estimate what the percentage would go up by? Any idea? From one point nine three, I think it's at?
So, the just the the core budget, not including the other two warrant articles that you're discussing.
Yeah.
With the change you made committing a portion of the existing retained fund balance, the the net assessment change is three hundred, a number we talked about earlier was a hundred, was five hundred and forty thousand, right? The number now is three hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is an increase of two point eight percent in net assessments to the towns. That make sense? The spending is up one point nine three percent, but because of a change in revenue, the net assessment is up two point eight four percent. If you were to add to that number the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the full cost of the lighting project, that number changes to the increase in net assessment goes to one point one four one million dollars or eight point two nine six percent from this year.
I mean, I was thinking.
And I'm not breaking it down by town there, right? I'm as I did earlier.
Yeah, I thought around seven or eight.
And that includes the operating budget, you're saying?
That's the change, that's the operating budget and the lighting project.
So putting that right in a line item in the budget, that would be the increase.
Yes.
And then on top of that, whatever Article One turns out to be. Absolutely. So I guess that could be. That's on top of that. Do we have a motion that was suggested, not seconded? Do we wanna? Do we, do we wanna reinstate that with a second or?
If there's no second, then I can withdraw the motion.
Is there a second? Do we need to review, hear it reviewed? Okay. Dan, will you state that again for us?
Well, is it basically what was here for you, Ben?
Yeah.
With the addition?
With the three.
Yeah.
If only three.
Gases from taxation as opposed to the whole. Okay, so no second? Any seconds? Sheila's second, will you? Alright, so we have our motion on the floor, seconded by Sheila. Any more discussion or?
Can I just ask a clarifying question on the motion?
Yes.
The motion is to change the wording on the draft warrant article that was handed out tonight to end with, and the combined soccer lacrosse athletic fields with up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from general taxation, the balance to come from donations and non ta- and 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 contributions.
Impossible, unreserved?
Nah, I think we're leaving that off.
Do we not, we're gonna take that off? Okay, alright.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Yes, that's. Okay, any discussion on that? Nope. Alright, um.
Actually, yeah. So just clarifying, how long does that give us to fundraise or how long does the school have to fundraise along with that?
From now until?
March.
March? For roughly four hundred thousand dollars?
Then what happens if that money isn't raised by March? It's still a warrant article, you can't do the warrant article, I think.
Right. That goes back to my question.
So I think it goes back to what Greg was saying.
Don't we continue to fundraise?
It means the project happens in a later year, I think, is what it is what it means. Then we'll raise it by March, right? I think we're here.
Yep, and the price is only good through this year.
Okay.
Yeah, so, was that everything? Okay.
Yeah.
So, I am all for putting a little bit of teeth into the warrant article, cuz I think, I trust that you're gonna do a good job of fundraising. I do. But without any teeth, as it's written here, um, that we amended, you wouldn't really have to do any fundraising and you would still get the project to go. I would propose that you just make it a token amount instead of half of the project that has to be funded by March, or else it's pretty unlikely. I mean, it's four hundred grand, you have to go get it. So, I I think I would support a much smaller token fundraising amount. Fifty thousand? That seems like a lot more achievable before people have even seen this warrant article.
So, with seven hundred to come from taxation and now forty-nine?
I think if we're saying that we want the lights to go, and that's the reason we're putting the warrant article out there for the voters to vote on it, that we have to make it achievable.
Well, but then, I mean, I I think maybe the point of just putting the whole amount on the thing would be more. I I guess the the thing that concerns me with the whole amount is just the, and and I I kind of appreciate what you're saying, that it it makes sense to let them know that there's there's something coming.
Yeah.
Um, let the taxpayers know. But like Lisa said, if if you get a turnout of everyone that wants the the, um, the lights and, you know, you get a big wave of support, but the people that aren't really familiar or don't understand how much that's gonna impact their taxes if there's no fundraising, are gonna be just as impacted, but you know, won't maybe won't be out there voting because they don't realize and I ju- I just, I hate anybody to get get hit with a big tax bill. I don't know.
We don't have to make this decision tonight. We have more time, right? As I'm hearing it, we we have another meeting on the seventh. We don't have to post anything till the twenty-first. Is, am I right?
Yes.
Well, to hear it is the seventh.
And these people are pretty passionate. If we tell them to leave this meeting and start rallying their troops, and they come back on the seventh with what they have and what we've received for donations, we might be having a different conversation.
The one other, oh, the one, if I may?
Yes.
Too, too many voices. The one other option that you may have is to leave the article as it's written, and then someone once you get to the beginning of February and you get to your first deliberative session, any registered voter of of the district could move at the first deliberative session to amend the article. Let's say we know at that time, we've got three hundred thousand dollars donations by the first deliberative session at the end of the first week of February.
Any one of us being a SAU.
You amend the article.
Yeah.
Any.
Any any registered voter in the seven towns?
Yeah.
Couldn't make a motion at the first deliberative session to amend the article to max up, to cap the amount to be raised through local taxation at seven forty-nine, nine ninety-eight minus the donations we have in hand at that time.
That might be a great idea. Then we kinda know what we're dealing with, or we just don't know what we're dealing with.
And that's the and and the amended article that comes out of the first deliberative session is what's printed on the ballot that people get handed on March twelfth, when they go into a voting booth in their town hall.
So that's, then that's not till February.
So the first deliberative session is February, I think it's the sixth.
Yeah, it's after the month.
Tuesday, February fourth, excuse me. So, on Tuesday night, February fourth, the first deliberative session, the motion, you leave it as it's written.
Then you have the donors that know it's being drafted on the, it's hard to sell something that's not even gonna be on the warrant article, so that gives an opportunity.
Right.
Even for one of any any one of the board members to make that move.
Any any voter at all?
Yeah.
Can make that, can amend that, make and move to amend that article.
Okay, so we would, we would move these four articles this evening, and then we would amend down the road.
I I like that.
I I think Article two, Article two is still draft form.
Article two, we're gonna have to have to confirm on right before our our hearing.
Same grounds, okay.
Right.
Okay. Alright, how are people with that?
I just wanna thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll see you all later.
Thank you for having me.
Alright, so who would like to make that? Do you?
Well, we have a vote.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor, right?
So, um, we can, I mean, I I like what Dan's saying, so I'm either willing to draw the motion or we can vote it down and I don't know what the right procedure is.
Or send it?
Take a move to amend it.
Back to the original.
Keep it, yeah.
Well, you.
Or amend it with the kit we're talking about, with the draft?
I think Robert's rules would suggest you could withdraw your motion with the permission, with the consent of the secondment party.
Um, yes, I.
Yes.
Consent.
Okay, so I withdraw my motion.
Alright, so now.
You wanna make?
Well, we're we're just gonna go with the original.
So the original four articles with Article number three in draft state, is that?
No, I think Article number two is in draft form. Article number three is going to appear on at the first deliberative session as written.
Yes. Alright.
And then you may, there may be a motion at the first deliberative session to amend that article to cap the amount to be raised through taxation once a known amount is estimated for donations and fundraising.
You're making that?
Yes.
Seconded Sheila, well, I'm just gonna stick with Sheila just to see. Alright, okay.
Madam Chair, I don't know that you need a motion. I'm just curious what the motion is.
To move the warrant?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Move the, yeah. Um, any discussion? Are we good? Does everybody understand what's happening? Okay, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 So, is this, I'm sorry, we're saying a draft of Article?
No, two.
Two.
Three?
Two.
Drafting on two because it doesn't have any numbers in it yet.
So Article three is being, oh, well, well.
Well, it's going forward in this form until the deliberative session. Hopefully, we can amend it, or something can.
Sorry, I didn't.
If we go to the deliberative session, nobody, nobody makes an amend, doesn't amend the warrant article, then it goes through as a seven ninety-eight, doesn't it?
That's correct, and then the voters would have the up or down on the seven forty-nine or the seven.
But Paul, you can make that motion. You realize that, right? Yeah.
I would.
Yeah, so I'm just stating, I guess, the obvious, but, you know.
Cuz we still don't know what the collective bargaining agreement's gonna be.
Right, that's why that's in draft, yeah.
Well, that's what, why I think it's better to hold off and see what's gonna happen. That's why I'm really more interested in what's fundraised than we can actually put up to. We're just trying to keep the budget below three percent. That's the, you know, that's the purpose of the board, that's the, that's our goal.
Right. Right.
If you add that, we're at what, eight?
Yeah. Okay, so.
Didn't vote?
Alright, so we, are we ready to vote? Yeah.
Did. I think he just voted.
He did, so.
He voted yeses already.
Except he raised your hand, so is that?
You didn't say.
No.
So he's one no.
So let's do a roll call on it, has that, you wanna do a roll call?
Can you do that?
Can we, we can't count me?
Well, I think you already did the yeses.
Well, Carolyn stopped and didn't vote, so we're, we got Carolyn's, you know, we don't have, okay.
Question.
I just don't know why we can't keep that a draft.
Article two and three?
Yeah. I mean, let let everybody go out, like I said, and see what happens.
So, so I would suggest that with a motion on the floor and a vote in process, your your choice is either to support the motion or vote against it. And if the vote fails, then you could reconsider a different motion, but there's a there's a there's a voting process on a motion. I don't mean to sound disrespectful, I just.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, no. So, we're your, it's your motion. Do you wanna change it to the draft of two and three or rescind and then re or keep it out?
Well, no, we already have, and you're, you're, you're. I just, I just have to.
I already voted.
Yeah, it is. I vote yes.
Yeah, cuz we already voted yes, alright.
So it's nine in favor and one no.
I do.
Barbara was no, so two no. And who else was no? Paul was no, okay. Everybody else was in favor.
And Aiden in favor.
Can you just, for my sake, just clarify what that motion was for, the reasons?
Sure, the the motion is to move Article three in the draft warrant that was presented to the board tonight.
Right.
Forward.
All, no, all, the whole warrant.
This is the sheet.
That's what I.
Open the sheet.
Yeah.
The whole warrant.
All four.
With with Article two to be determined.
With two. Right.
Correct.
Headed negotiations.
Yes.
Right, you already voted on the budget, so that includes that piece.
Yeah.
That's already done.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's I just want, that's my.
Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see.
Um, just under other business.
Yeah.
Um, I I don't need a committee meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Um, but I I would like to, we usually do a board meeting, well, forty-five minutes prior to the hearing, just to do hearing prep and to make sure everybody's all set with that, is everybody good with?
Can I say it's six thirty, where you leave the time, Carla?
So, are the hearing, the budget hearings on your, at the agenda, just for everyone, the budget hearing and the deliberative session. So the budget hearing is January seventh at six thirty. And then, um, we usually meet at five forty-five-ish?
Okay.
And we do a shortened agenda, um, for that.
So, uh, we'll change those, the budget hearing to five forty-five, and we will not have a meeting December seventeenth?
Correct.
You say the budget hearing is at six thirty and the board meeting is at five forty-five?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
The budget hearing's at six thirty.
Yeah, it's written on it.
Budget hearing, we start up here and then we have it in the cafeteria.
Sounds good.
And the and the regular meeting's at five thirty?
Five forty-five. We'll just, we'll just do an abbreviated, um, agenda, because then we have to.
And nothing than seventeen, December seventeen. Alright, privilege of the floor, part two. Yes. Just we need your name, what time you're from?
Elaine Velkas, Beach Hill Road in Plymouth. Um, I'm gonna apologize at first, just by, I'm gonna be saying the same thing I said last night at the elementary school meeting. Um, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but, um, I am speaking for a lot, a lot of residents in Plymouth. An awful lot of residents. Um, we hear all these numbers about retained funds and capital, um, uh, reserve funds and that sort of thing, which is healthy for the town, I realize this, but in these inflationary times that we've been in for several years, the average homeowner in Plymouth does not have that luxury. They've taken all their savings, all their retained funds just to live and pay for food and heat. Uh, and I know this from personal experience. So I'm gonna ask the board to please you throw a one point nine percent as a budget increase. I think because in your heads, you've established this rule or priority to keep your budget under three percent, that when you come under three percent, you think, oh my god, that's really good. And in regular times, I would agree that is really good. I think in the TV, it'd be tighter in these times. There's a lot of, lot of people out there very, very angry at this town. They're angry at the school board, they're angry at the town people, because the budgets just keep going up and up and up and up. Our last two tax bills have been crazy. I even called the state of New Hampshire, I said, what is going on? Um, commercial properties decreased in value and residential properties increased in value, and that's what happened with our assessment. Um, commercial properties decreased in value, and residential properties increased in value, and that's what happened with our assessment um, over the summer. But anyway, I just want you to please look really hard, um, at what you're proposing for, um, expenditures. And I do agree, anything extra like your lights and everything, or whatever it is that everybody feels they want or need is a wonderful thing, but keep it as a warrant article, people need to see that separated. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, um, board member concerns, anybody, new thing?
Yes.
Yes.
Now that we have the warrant article stuff out of the way, who is gonna be in charge of fundraising for the lights?
Well.
The clock is gonna start ticking, I'm just curious, is there someone you've identified that's gonna be running that as a project?
Well, I think Janet and Todd have done some preliminary work, so we're gonna start putting together a team a little bit, and reach out to the folks that have come, obviously, it's spoke to the public, and those that are interested already, I would go from there. So.
Right, any other?
If you know of anyone who wants to, please feel free to know our way.
Okay. A motion, or who wants to make a motion to go non-public and stay while we're going to non-public?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Or, who states, or who's?
Oh, um, personnel.
Seconded by? I'll second that. Barbara, roll call, Paul.